I wanted to tell you that I did get, well, he's gonna bring you the real copy. I did get the AF for Panny.
Okay, great.
But this is just a copy of it.
That's fine.
Look how we did it. So I told him I needed it in person.
That's fine. Thank you.
How are you?
How are you?
I'm the first one here.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, Rocco.
It's a snow day right here.
How you doing?
How you doing?
It's good.
How am I sitting?
Hey.
I made it out of your unique here what I look like.
I beat you, so I got the prize.
You can switch seats if you'd like to.
No, no, that's okay.
How are you, Michael?
Hey.
I'm running a little late.
I've never been the first one here.
Okay, it's fine. I'm used to just wearing a sweater and not a backpack.
Jackie, did you see my late email?
I sent it to you.
Oh, you did?
I said, I mean, yeah.
Thank you. They're all closed?
Yes, the others were closed.
I don't know how I missed it. I figured they were. Clean house, eh?
Hey, how are you?
Good, man.
It was good, huh?
Yeah.
How's your vacation? Nice, it was easy to find every day in Florida.
Just trying to make sure you're covered in gosh.
What the sun, I don't know, it was a great winter until. How you doing?
Good. Pens? I always bring two in case Rocco hits me up.
No, I have, I brought it again, but thank you. I've been keeping one in my little bag. There it is. Figured if I put it in there, I'll be all right. You know, I take a different car all the time. Usually I have pens in the car. But then it's a pain in that transfer from car to car. All right. We have some home people. I've taken change from home people.
Oh, really? Are you?
Good, how you doing? How you doing, buddy? Good, man. I didn't miss her. It's a little bored. Yeah, right? I see bored, I see the board already. I know I took a schedule instead of a plan. I couldn't think of the words.
Yeah. That's fine.
I think you know what I was talking about.
I did. Yeah, there's some usual attendments.
Yeah, this one I made it to put in order. It's like, yeah.
Right. You know, stuff from last month. So, thank you for the note, I forgot all about it. I knew that would happen though, so. That's, that's the problem. So many things have happened between then and now.
Jackie, is this all extra stuff in this new folder or is that stuff you sent us already?
Uh, you said, no, everything here is not, not extra.
Okay. Do I have that already?
Oh, you, yeah, this, you do not.
Okay.
This, you know, this is all the stuff that matters.
Okay, so that's extra stuff, I'm putting it in my pile.
Yeah. And nothing in your pile will be in that file.
Oh, it is?
It is, yeah.
Is it two months, huh?
I'm, I have thirty more days than work.
Really?
And I'm retiring, yeah?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
It's crazy, it's crazy. Thirty-seven weeks.
Yeah, yeah, I took thirty-seven years to correct them. Yeah, it felt good getting out of here, right?
I'm done. Court, to towns with Cortland and others, you're just gonna have to survive.
We're up there. I was at the airport and it vindicates any sort of expansion. Anyone is proposing. It was crazy.
I, I saw at the last meeting, I actually said maybe I'm gonna resign, or no, I'll retire before the next meeting. As opposed to having one more meeting in that work. They would not, they would ask, and the commissioner of public works said I may be retiring with you. That's how bad it was. It was, they worked so hard. All right, so where does it begin?
Yeah, it'll be right behind you.
Because I'm just gonna have to pick it up when I'm in a daze. And if I don't walk enough, I'll be walking more.
It takes a while, it took you a year and a half to get structure back into my life.
I have to, I do have two weddings to plan, so I love it.
Well, yeah, that's fine.
My twin daughters both got any dates, but so I have to.
That leaves a lot of time to think about. Now what, yeah?
No, you're gonna just, um.
A word.
Bring a twenty-four and fall a twenty-four. Oh, yeah. Yeah. What, once they said, after they said fifty? Mine haven't yet. No, all I know is Salt Lake City and it'll be New Hampshire or Vermont. All right, ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
All right, I'm, oh, the zoning board of appeals meeting of February twenty-eighth to order. Can we start with a roll call?
Alberto Paratory.
Aziz Essen.
Norma Drummond.
Rocco Lomato.
Good, thank you. Can I ask everyone to stand in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. All right, just some quick announcements. I'm just gonna say it because March, there's still a possibility of snow. So in the event of snow for next month's meeting, the meeting just gets, if town hall is can, is closed, then our meeting is canceled. It's not rescheduled, it's not postponed. It's, there's, actually, it is canceled. There's just no meeting and will, anything that would have been on the agenda for next month gets pushed on to the following meeting. We, our next meetings will be Tuesday, March twenty-eighth, and then Tuesday, April twenty-fifth. We have one set of minutes to approve. The minutes of January twenty-fourth, it had very, very few amendments. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Um, I made some amendments and I sent to everybody, so.
But still not many amendments.
Correct, correct. So I, I second the motion.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, votes as follows. Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm a little discombobulated tonight, okay.
As amended, so I just wanna make sure.
Thank you. All right, we do have one, if you, if the board remembers, we did have an application by Brusk, but the address was twenty-six Marcy in Hopewell Junction, that was looking to do a home office, if you remember, and we had some conversation with her and suggested that she rethink it. But we did actually agree to hold the public hearing if she so chose. But in the meantime, she rethought it, came, got back to Jackie, and said that she's not going to move forward with her request. So I did, do need a motion by this board to refund all but five dollars of her application fee.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so this, thank you. So when you see that it's not on the agenda, you all know that.
I'm sorry, what was the name of that again?
Brusk.
Brock, okay.
Yeah. Brooke?
Brock.
Okay, thank you. All right, so those are the only. There's no changes to the agenda, so we're just gonna, let me explain the process for those of you who haven't been here before. The first items on our agenda are public hearings. Some of them are ones that have already been opened, but these are applications that this board has already had the opportunity to review. And we really are now looking for comments from neighbors just to see if there's any concerns that we should be aware of. The second part of the meeting is reviews, which is really the first or second time that we're looking at an application just to make sure the board understands what you as applicants are asking for. And then at the appropriate time, we would set any reviews up for a public hearing. So with that said, let's jump right in. Item number one is an adjourned public hearing. Appeal four zero four eight, Stuart Taub, twenty-seventh Falcon Crest Court, Hopewell Junction, requesting a twenty-foot sideline variance for a forty-foot by twenty-five-foot or one thousand square foot detached garage pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. The footprint of the existing house is one thousand eight hundred and four square feet. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good evening, Michael.
Good evening.
So when we last met, well, let me give a little recap here. So in the month of November, we actually held the public hearing on the application. Actually, this board got as far as approving it and then we realized that the measurements were not exactly accurate. I think we approved seven-foot variance and then you brought to our attention that the.
Right.
We needed to make an adjustment, where you were requesting an adjustment to that number. So we came back, had a public hearing, opened the public hearing again last month for the twenty-foot adjust side yard. The neighbors to the immediate, looking at the property immediately, right, did come expressing some concerns that they hadn't, for whatever reason, received the notice previously because they had a post office address as opposed to the street address. And so they did ask if you could meet them out on site. So if you could tell us what happened with.
So I wasn't personally there, but my, the owner, applicant Stuart Taub, did meet with the owners out there.
Right.
Looked at, we actually, I went out there and staked that out for them generally, so they knew where the corners were and so forth. Meeting went fine. They were, now that they kind of knew what was being proposed, I think it took some weight off the whole situation, as it was last, last, last month. It was re-advertized, I believe, so they would have got the notice. He asked if they had to go. Did they have to go? And it's not necessarily you can or cannot, whatever, so I don't think they're here tonight. So presumptively, you know, they're, they're okay with what was, what was proposed.
Did I open the public hearing?
Yes.
Thank you. I did, I wrote it down, okay. So, thank you. They, he did actually share a email with us that he received from the neighbors, but it kind of indicated that they would be here this evening. So it's fine, they do not have to be here. So that's fine. All right, so as we talked about last time, there is some vegetation that screens this garage from the neighbors, but they were just concerned about, you know, making sure that it was not preempting any property, any of their property rights or anything like that, so. All right, comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
I have nothing.
I have none.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Stuart Taub, twenty-seventh Falcon Crest Court, Hopewell Junction, requesting a twenty-foot sideline variance for a forty-foot by twenty-five-foot detached garage? So seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Appeal number four zero four eight. Applicant Stuart Taub. A twenty, the name of the project. A twenty-foot sideline variance from the schedule of bulk regulations for a proposed forty-by-twenty-five, one thousand square feet detached garage located at twenty-seventh Falcon Crest Court, Hopewell Junction. Tax number, tax map number six five five seven dash oh three dash three six three one three nine. Zoning District R one. Resolution reads as, whereas the applicant has requested to build a detached garage and whereas the applicant has proposed this garage to store classic cars and whereas this is a type two action under SECRA and no further review is required. And whereas the zoning board of appeals held by public hearing on November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two and continued on January twenty-fourth and February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two and January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood since the applicant will use the garage for the storage of classic passenger vehicles. The desired result cannot be achieved by other means due to the layout of the property. The variance could be deemed substantial, but there is existing vegetation between this property and the neighbors to screen the garage. The variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request from Stuart Taub for a proposed twenty-foot sideline variance from the schedule of bulk regulations for a proposed forty-by-twenty-five, one thousand square feet detached garage. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized members of the zoning board shall cause a, shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filled with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Aziz. Votes as follows, Aziz.
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries, you're all set.
Great, thanks, folks.
Have a good evening.
You too, again.
All right, item number two. Appeal four zero five zero, Keisha Duncan, one seventy-four Woodmont Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a twenty-foot sideline variance for a twenty-eight-foot by twenty-four-foot or six hundred and seventy-two square foot two-story garage or storage addition pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. So I have a motion to, we can be in the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good evening. Good evening. So last month, we met with you again and discovered that we all had the wrong paperwork. So we have. New ones in our folders to that, of course. We got. Huh? Yes, okay. So just bear with us as we go through this.
The survey we have is November eleventh, twenty twenty-two. Is that the same one?
No, but I have November, updated November twenty-third, twenty twenty-two.
Where is it, where does the update?
I don't have an updated one.
Well, actually, updated January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Thirty-first, yes.
Okay, no, that's better than he did it. Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm good. I saw that. Just in the sideline, side.
So what changed? It actually looks like this group. It went, it's now instead of twenty-six feet, two inches going back, it's now twenty-eight feet, seventeen inches. Twenty, no, sorry, twenty-eight point one seven. Wow, I can not. On the ball today. So we're now nine feet away from the property line and this part, this old survey wasn't marked as to how far away we were.
Should you have the corrected plan or?
I have the one that was in the folder tonight.
I don't think I have one. I think I missed that. I have January thirty.
Because we had extra corrected.
Yeah. Holders, not even had it.
Sorry.
That was that in the folder, yeah.
I'm gonna miss that.
Number, it's probably up to one thirty-one twenty-three.
So what you had asked for was twenty.
But yet, but yet the ones that we have in color was received in February. And that shows that the link got bigger.
Yeah, well, again, we had twenty-eight feet, ten inches by twenty-six feet, two inches, and now it has gone to twenty-four point one seven and twenty-eight seventeen. So twenty-six point two went to twenty-seven, twenty-eight seventeen. And the.
Twenty-four point two went to twenty-four point one seven.
Well, actually, well, it went from twenty.
From twenty-eight.
From twenty-eight, twenty-eight to twenty-four.
Right.
Just.
Twenty-four point two.
So twenty-eight point one seven.
I have twenty-eight, actually. Twenty-eight, ten.
We're from twenty-eight point one seven and twenty-six point two.
February.
Oh, okay, so I should get rid of this guy then.
Yeah.
Sure. Twenty-eight to twenty-six, okay.
Okay, okay.
Nope.
Okay, so this one is from.
January.
Okay, this one was February sixth, okay.
But this is the old one.
Twenty-six, twenty-four. Yeah, so it grew. Twenty-six, twenty-four, it grew to twenty-four, twenty-eight.
This is the one dated February.
Right. This is the old one.
And so this is where it's twenty-four point two. And now the new one.
This is the old one.
Oh, you got a really, this is a really old one.
That's the January one. This is the one that came in last month.
This is the one we had last month, but there's one in the folder tonight.
That's this one. This is the one that was in the folder.
Oh, I'm so confused. Why do I have an extra one then? It dated January thirty-first. And that's the one Jackie just held up that said this is the one to use.
Yeah, no, I have one, this is from.
This one. No, it's November twenty-third.
Yeah, no, I have this one from January ninth, twenty-three.
The one, it says, right over here in the left-hand corner.
Right.
One thirty-one twenty-three.
This one.
Yeah, but then I also have this one compared to that one.
Right, so she's saying don't use this one, but we're, we're using it for comparative purposes and seeing that it got bigger.
Okay, so we should.
So this is the one to use. Nope.
Let's see if it's separate or something.
You can share this one.
All right. Keep looking at it.
So this, the front shrank a little bit with the.
This still saved twenty-eight point one seven, and that stayed the same as the old one for January.
Okay.
Yeah, that stayed the same.
Okay.
So this went down to twenty-four point one seven.
Versus twenty-four point two.
Okay, so basically for the record, I think we're gonna just use the one from January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three and then work with that one. So she's requesting a nine-foot variance.
Because I think we left off, we needed the right measurements and the correct plan.
Correct.
Correct.
Wait, she needs a.
Just under ten minutes.
So Jackie, you have it listed as this twenty-foot sideline variance, but she's got nine feet. Oh, she's in the R three zone, so it's thirty feet. So she really needs.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one feet. Well, we always have to go to the whole foot.
No, no, she's nine, nine feet.
Nine point one one.
Nine point one one. Nine point one one.
She said nine point one one, so she's just over nine feet. So she needs a twenty-one foot sideline variance, but one foot is not gonna make or break the difference here.
Okay, I know, we have to just have it right. So twenty-one is fine.
And again, the nature of the rocks that are on your property make it really difficult in terms of where else you can put this. You do not have an existing garage on your property, like with your house. What you had explained to us was that your house is at some strange level and so the kitchen is actually not on the first, real first level, it's?
In the basement.
Yeah.
You're on the top of one of the hills?
Yes.
Of the mountain, yeah.
And then we communicate, it was communicated to us from your neighbor immediately to your left, the most, well, the one that would be most impacted that she recognized that she was fine with this because you were gonna need a variance, pretty much do anything you needed to do. All right, any comments or questions?
I am good, with a new map, with a new layout, I'm fine.
Yeah, I'm good with the new, uh?
All right, is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Keisha Duncan? One seventy-four Woodmont Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a twenty-one foot sideline variance for a twenty-eight foot by twenty-four or six hundred and seventy-two square foot two-story garage addition pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Rocco, you wanna?
Go ahead, yeah, I can't, I have the old one.
Oh, no, I mean, I'll just, I mean, I have the, okay. This is appeal number, appeal number four zero five zero, applicant is Keisha Duncan, requesting a twenty-foot side, twenty-one, twenty-one, I'm gonna correct it as we go along. Twenty-one foot sideline variance from the requirements of the schedule of bulk regulations for a twenty-eight by twenty-four, six hundred and seventy-two square foot, two-story garage store addition, storage addition. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Anson, whereas the applicant currently does not have a garage at her residence and whereas the applicant is applying to the building department for an extension to the existing out house to improve its livability and whereas there is a rock outcrop that limits the location of potential addition and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one and continued on January twenty-fourth and February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on November sixteen, twenty twenty-two, and whereas the zoning board of appeal, appeals finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as the house will remain residential in nature and the addition would be screened from neighbors. The desired result cannot be achieved by other means due to the layout of the property. The variance could be deemed substantial, the variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental condition. Now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request from Keisha Duncan for a twenty-foot sideline variance? Uh, twenty-one, sorry, sorry, I was, twenty, twenty-one foot sideline variance from the requirements of the schedule of bulk regulations for a twenty-eight feet by twenty-four foot, six seventy-two square foot, two-story garage, storage, storage addition. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Before we have a second, is this still a storage, garage and storage, or is it a store, is it a garage on the first floor and living space upstairs? That's what I thought during the course of our review, that it was actually gonna be living space, so let's just amend it to strike the word storage, okay, because it's gonna be living space.
Okay, so, as amended, the, the, the term?
It's just in the heading and in the?
Correct, yeah.
In the final result.
So the?
So?
Two-story garage and living addition.
Yeah.
And living space.
And just addition.
Living addition, or just addition, so storage is removed, as amended. It'll be done.
Wow, this is gonna be cool tonight. All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Aziz.
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Al?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion carries, you are all set, you'll now deal with the building department, okay? Have a good night. Sorry, guys, just bear with us, this is just, sometimes there's just, sometimes too many favors just make things a little crazy. All right, next on the agenda. Item number three, appeal four zero five two, Panny Industry, Inc., two fifty-six Woodmont Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a special permit in order to bring in one thousand seven hundred and fifty additional cubic yards of fill, a total of twenty-five hundred cubic yards less three hundred and seventy-five per year for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three pursuant to section one ninety-four dash seventy-five of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Panny Industry, come on up. So we did have an opportunity to kind of review your application with you. You brought in fill, the town code allows you to bring in three hundred and seventy-five cubic yards of fill each year, and so your application came in toward the end of last year, so we recognize that you were allowed three hundred and seventy-five last year, you're allowed three hundred and seventy-five this year, so we took seven fifty off the top. Woodmont Road, you pretty much, you're building a new house there, pretty much your backyard is a cliff or drop-off, okay? So we don't doubt that bringing in some fill makes sense, however, you cannot be impacting your neighbor with any kind of drainage issues or anything like that. And so the town issued a stop work order because some fill was being brought in over and above the amount. At our last meeting, we did ask that you have your engineer give us the exact number or as close as you can be, fill tickets or something that shows us how much fill was actually brought in, because there is some concern that we want to make sure we have the right number here. And I don't think anything's been provided to the town yet regarding that.
Uh, he had done that back originally when we submitted this stuff.
Who did it go to? The town?
He submitted it to the town engineer, I know that.
So as of Friday the seventeenth, George Kronk said he hasn't received anything from Jack Correll, his engineer.
Hmm.
As far as I know, he told me he had submitted the calculations to him, so.
I can only go by what down, I'll tell, for that to work here.
I understand, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just, I'm saying that when I talked to my engineer, he told me he had submitted that, the yardage count, so.
I guess if you don't have the thing, then we can't really, we don't know what to base our resolution on, so I would suggest that we move it for next?
Well, just hold it over, if there's any neighbors that are here, we want to give them an opportunity to comment, because apparently you're not the only neighbor that, you're not the only person that has a backyard, that has a little bit of a drop-off in the, in its backyard, so. But, so before I go to any neighbors?
I, I don't?
Any other comments or questions from board members?
Other than the issues that you've raised, other than that, I don't have other, other issues.
Okay, so is there anybody here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Panny Industry for two fifty-six Woodmont Road, Hopewell, requesting a special permit to bring in one thousand seven hundred and fifty additional cubic yards of fill? Come on up.
How are you guys tonight?
Good, how are you?
I'm well.
Yeah, could you please give us your name?
So I live adjacent to the property that we're talking about right now, and question of fills come in because I'm the one with the water damage.
Okay.
So there's a couple different things that have come up from the last meeting that I reviewed. We questioned the backyard, my backyard's a cliff, most Woodmont Road?
Right.
Backyards are cliffs. You see the lady that was here before, her backyard's all stone, right? So that is a common thing on Woodmont Road. The original plot plans that were submitted, that backyard is a cliff, it's, I have them right here, it's practically nonexistent. So Mr. Panny knew that when he started construction, that there would not be a backyard, it would be a very, very small backyard. As far as the fill, six twenty-eight, twenty-two, they already knew, Mr. Kronk knew, that he was bringing in more fill than he was supposed to. So this goes back a long time now. We've been having bad water problems on my property since they started. Now, when they started construction, that was okay, I had a conversation with Mr. Panny about it because we cut all the trees down over there, there was no vegetation left. There's only several trees left of the actual woods that were there when we started. So immediately water was a concern because we are downhill from that property. He said, no problem, we'll take care of it, you won't have any issues. Well, we had plenty of issues, all right? So we were supposed to have a swell and a burn put in right away, that did not happen. We had to go to the town over, unfortunately, we're not those type of people, but significant damage has been caused to my property, destroyed my wife's garden, we installed a shed, destroyed all the fill, all the item, the topsoil we put down, that's all washed out, there's trenches in my backyard, trenches, big ones, I have pictures of them. Filling more, that's what we're talking about today, adding more fill, another seventeen fifty.
He's not bringing in anymore, this is to account for what's been brought in.
Okay, because you said?
So let's be clear, he's not bringing, I know, understood, he was allowed by code three hundred and seventy-five cubic yards last year, and because we're dealing with the application this year, he's allowed three hundred and seventy-five this year, he's already brought it in.
Okay.
And he's assured us there's not any additional fill coming in, this is just to account for the fill that's already been put in place. But that's why we're asking for verification that that's the real number.
He also assured George Kronk, nine thirteen twenty-two, that he wasn't bringing in any more fill, but more fill was brought in. So you can see, I'm not exactly prone to believing things that are said because we've been lied to multiple times, all right? I have everything in email, I have everything in writing. He told them he wasn't gonna bring in any more fill, more fill was brought in, still. We have topsoil being brought in now, okay, I was understood that that, obviously, we're gonna need topsoil, we're gonna need grass, we're gonna need all that, but that's still adding more to what we already have. It, we had a drainage pipe finally put in, it was about a little bit about a month and a week ago, it was put in. We have no idea if this drainage is working or not, because we haven't had a significant rainfall. Hopefully it is, this way my property starts, stops being damaged. The amount of topsoil he's gonna need to bring in to cover all of the construction rubble that was brought in in the backyard is gonna be a significant amount, it's going to add more already to what's going on. There's water drainage in the back, all the water from the road is being diverted to the back of the property. That water is going into a natural stream that's been there, it's been there a very, very long time. My father-in-law's sitting behind me, he's lived in this house his whole life, over fifty years, it's always been there, now it's getting bigger, now it's turning into a swamp. The drainage that they put in is now adding to that water. All that topsoil that's gonna run down that hill, guess where that's going? It's going right in that pit and that's gonna create more of a swamp. That's now uphill from my property, so that's gonna be coming down into me too. So as far as any more topsoil being, being brought in, maybe I misunderstood, because what I heard was he brought three seventy-five, three seventy-five, two years' worth in one year, and now seventeen fifty extra. That's what I heard.
No, it's, it's all there.
Okay, so?
That's what we've been told.
We're done.
That's what this word has been told, is it's all there, no additional fill is coming in.
Okay, only topsoil.
Fill is a topsoil, I mean, it's part of the same.
Yes.
Fill and topsoil, yeah.
So as far as the topsoil that's been brought in, which is way over the three hundred that was supposed to be brought in initially, what can be done about that?
Well, let's start with, has your property been restored yet?
No. Not even addressed yet. All, the only thing they said was they'll fix the water problem, and again, I don't know if it's been fixed or not. There's significant damage and we'll have to see if anything's even been rectified with the water.
Okay.
So we believe that, the engineer believes that they've rectified the problem?
Right.
George has been out there, we lifted the stop work order, but to the gentleman's point, he hasn't had any significant rainfall to see if this?
Right.
Has made the correction that we?
But who's responsible for fixing the damage to his property?
That's, it's gonna be a civil matter between the two parties, and I, I know that's, you know, not exactly what you want to hear, but it's, you know, it's unfortunate, we can't serve as the arbitrator of that, and we can't, we can't do some sort of equitable action and say, okay, since, you know, your property was damaged, part of your, you know, part of the approval is you have to pay for that. I, I understand your point, I'm not, I'm not trying to minimize that, it's just this board doesn't have the power to do that.
Right, we, I know it's not our?
Right, yeah, yeah, nobody, nobody in the town can, can?
Absolutely understand. It's gonna, it's gonna come to a civil matter, I, I get that.
Right.
But he's raising some points that this board certainly has to consider.
Oh, yeah, the drainage?
Okay, the drainage is, is, that's definitely a big issue, and again, if the, his engineer has not provided the calculations to the town as we requested at the last meeting, I'm not even willing to close the public hearing and, you know, I'm not gonna act on anything. But I'm also concerned about the statements that he's made, that he's told the town that he's not bringing any more fill and then more fill has come in.
The only thing that's come in is topsoil.
Okay.
That's what our package is.
And that's not part of the three seventy-five cubic yard calculation?
No.
Because it's not fill?
What the fill is?
All right, number one, I, when you speak, I just need you to be at the microphone, please, just so we have it, but yes, we would appreciate pictures.
Would you like to see fill?
Thank you.
That's the fill that's been brought in.
Thank you.
This is the drainage pipe that's supposedly fixing my problem, that one piece right there in the driveway, notice it's below grade, and that's the pipe that it's attached to, which is pumping out to the backyard.
Can you make them part of the record?
All right, so let's start with, this is the construction debris. Yeah, well, explain the third part of, what's the pipe?
That pipe is the drainage that was installed to help with the water problem. There is a culvert, how do you, how do you call it, the actual drain, and that pipe is attached to it, and that's right in the middle of the driveway.
This picture here is the drain and it's attached to that pipe?
Yes.
And that pipe's going to where?
And it's directing into the stream in the back?
Directing into, yeah, which is gonna be the backyard, our backyard.
All right, please, for the record, if you don't mind, if you could state your name as well.
My name is Scott Lombardo, I own, this is my son-in-law, my daughter in the back, I've owned the house for, since nineteen seventy, I've lived there.
That's the direction, which the pipe is traveling.
Okay.
One of the main concerns is the elevation. The elevation of all this fill that is coming in is ten foot above where our property is. They've raised it, they've already raised it ten feet above the, our elevation.
Right.
Okay, we have, instead of a proper wall, all he did is put boulders, and now he's got a, a swell coming down to the boulders, which isn't gonna hold any water back, it's, it's all gonna keep running into our property.
You can see from the plan, boulders were never part of that, that plan. It was supposed to be grass going down. Now we look at boulders every day.
Okay.
Part of the fill that I see in these pictures too is construction materials. It's all, everything that's come in, all, and I believe it's well over the seven hundred and fifty yards that were allowed for two years, is all being like construction debris, all concrete block, rebar, no, no asphalt dirt. Bricks, right.
I brought that up before and I was told that that's okay, we're allowed, I have no idea how much lead paint, asbestos is in that, where did it come from?
Right, there's no certification on where it came from, we're trying to grow food and all this runoff is running into what we're growing. And as I said, I believe it's well over the seven hundred and fifty square yards or cubic yards that are supposed to even be there for two years.
Well, that's, we all, we recognize that, twenty-five, he said twenty-five hundred cubic yards.
Already?
Yes.
Because?
There's none, no additional fill coming in.
He's not done, there's no way.
The, the way the sign reads, that it says?
We know it says additional because he was allowed the three seventy-five for last year, he's allowed the three seventy-five for this year, but it is all there already.
So there is no more fill coming in that box?
Correct, it's the additional because it's over and above what he was allowed.
And even the topsoil is considered a fill?
Well, he?
How's that pipe gonna get covered?
How, yeah, and he already, just this month, he brought in eighty, eighty additional yards of top fill, topsoil, and he doesn't have a septic in yet.
I think you should just face the, the chair.
Yeah, he doesn't have a septic in yet, so he's gotta fill, he's gotta cover that, and the pipe on the upper side of his hill is a three, I believe it's a thirty-inch or thirty-six inch culvert pipe, which isn't covered yet.
Okay.
It's, he's just, he's got a lot more fill that he, he really needs to bring in, and we're just, our property's just being damaged more and more, that's all I'm saying.
No, I appreciate it, thank you. Do you have any pictures of the actual damage to your property yet, so we can see the?
It should actually be on your file, we sent them in already.
That's fine.
It's gotten more severe, I'd be happy to send new ones in. Because the ones you have are back from, I want to say December, yeah, December, right? What they, they.
Yeah, we have actual trenches going down.
All right, if you're going to speak, sorry, I need you closer to the microphone. You, your voice projects, but for anybody.
We brought in, we brought in, I didn't fore it to set this new shed up. That's all washed away, you know, around the front and the side. We graded the side of the property, we had all grass seed put down, that is all washed away. Now we have one-foot trenches going down through, down, you know, our property and into the garden area. It's just a lot of damage. And we said, since this, before this house was built, we've been talking to the building department saying, this is going to happen, and it all did. Everything we said was going to happen actually happened. Like I said, I've been there a long time.
Again, when you're, when you're sending documents, you should make duplicates, one for the building department and one for the zoning.
Okay, well.
It depends when they were submitted, if they, because remember, they were only just invited to this public hearing, so they might not even have known there was an action going on.
Okay.
We didn't know any of this.
As you go forward, I mean.
Jackie should be able to get copies of the documents for us. You don't have to worry about providing them to us. Jackie will get documents for us.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else you wish to, because otherwise I want to bring the applicant back up.
I think you have enough to talk about by now.
Thank you, very much. So, come on back up. Do I even have your name, sorry?
One of the confusions is, is that you're saying that we're not bringing more fill. We are, okay? We have fifteen.
Then I'm really lost in what you're saying.
Yes, you are, because we have fifteen hundred yards of fill in there now, and we have another thousand yards of fill to cap everything. That's what this is.
Isn't it a? Is that, oh, hey, hold on, hold on.
Okay, because we have fifteen hundred yards now, that's what we have, and that's what we're here.
Hold on, please.
Sure.
Is that your understanding in the building department, that there's more fill coming?
Thought that George thought that that twenty-five hundred is already on site.
So we believe there's already twenty-five hundred, so we think your original calculation is way off.
My engineer has fifteen hundred yards, but that was brought in, that's, and I know that was submitted.
That goes back to.
You need to let us have some conversation, please, okay?
That goes back to our original point. We have no confirmation from his engineer.
So, so your neighbors are correct. We were not informed correctly at the last meeting that the, all the fill was here.
Yeah, I don't remember that in the last meeting. I was here at the last meeting, I don't remember that being said. Because I know we had fifteen hundred yards that was brought in. And then that was, that's all that concrete and stuff. And then there's material that goes over it to backfill everything and grade the whole property up.
So how, what's the?
So the total will be twenty-four hundred or twenty-five hundred yards total.
Looking at the photographs that they provided of the pipe, you're talking feet, that pipe is feet off the ground.
We hadn't finished shaping the property from what it was. We had, they stopped us, so there was just a pile in the middle. That material needs to be spread out, and then cap material goes over it. And we were stopped, so we couldn't finish grading up. Once the job got stopped.
Sorry, but rightfully you were stopped.
No, no.
Because you brought in fill that you were not allowed to bring in.
I'm sorry, but we had a building permit, and nobody had informed us that we needed this. When we got the building permit. If we had that, we would have been here way before it, okay? We were not informed, we had applied for a building permit and were issued a building permit, and nobody had asked, nobody said that we needed to get a fill permit.
But the plot plan showed that this house was not going to have a backyard. It showed that there was going to be a drop-off in the backyard.
It shows the drop-off in the back.
Right, so if you wished to make that backyard.
But we didn't know that you had a fill law. I'm sorry, we, we're not from the area, we didn't know that there was a law, so we were going to come.
But it is your responsibility as the builder, developer, whatever your role is.
And that's why we're here now, we're trying to, we're trying to rectify the situation to, to make everybody happy, if we can.
Okay, so in that regard, I'm just going to ask the question, what are you going to do about the damage that's been happened, that's happened to the neighbor's property?
Well, if I need to, if I need to help him with some material to, to shape up his yard, I'm happy to do that.
All right.
I don't have a problem with that. Nobody's asked me to do that either. If somebody had asked me, I would happily do it for them. I, nobody's asked me to do anything. I've been stopped, and machines have been pulled out, brought back. I've had a lot of expense to, to come back and forth. But if anybody would ask me, I would have been happily to say, listen, I can, I have machines on the site, I have guys that are there working, if we can help you, we'll help you.
Okay, but when the town engineer was out there, or the engineering, the building department was out there, and they brought to your attention that you were causing damage to the neighboring property at that point, it didn't?
Damn, stop, put a stop-work order that day, we had no opportunity to do anything.
Okay, it didn't dawn on you to have a conversation with the neighbor to fix that damage?
I'm happy to do it for him. I don't have a problem doing that.
Okay.
If it means bringing some material in to shape up his yard, I'll happily do it for him. As far as the water, the pipe is, where the pipe is going, it's on the plan. The other pipe was what the town engineer asked us to do. It needs to be extended further down, but we did it to stop the flow of water at the time because the engineer asked, your town engineer asked us to do it, so we did exactly what he asked us to do. That make, to try and rectify the problem as quick as possible. And we're doing it exactly what they asked us to do. We're, we're not elaborating on it, we're not doing anything different, we're, we just extended it. George came out, he said, yes, that's going to divert the water away from them for now. When you finish it, it'll stop the flow of water from going there. We're working on finishing, they lifted our stop-work order, now we can do that. Once we get this fill permit, we can finish grading the backyard and finish the whole landscape of the property.
Okay, for us to act, we need information.
But I thought this was submitted, I'm sorry, I thought the engineer submitted it.
To be submitted to the building department, so that we know exactly how much fill has already been brought in.
But I thought we did that to get here. We had said, we have fifteen hundred yards, we're bringing another thousand yards, and that's why we're here.
And I'm not sure that anybody has actually seen calculations as to how you got there.
Okay.
Okay, so that's what we're telling you right now, very clearly. Your engineer needs to provide to the building department all the calculations that they have asked for. This board will not act.
I understand.
Until we have all of the information we need and that the neighbors need to understand that the.
I apologize, I thought it was here. That's all I'm trying to say, I thought it was here.
We're just making sure that the action you're proposing to take is in fact not going to cause more damage, and will fix the circumstances that you've now created.
Okay.
Okay? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak for or against this appeal? Two fifty-six Woodmont Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a special permit to bring in one thousand seven hundred and fifty additional cubic yards. Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn to the, maybe the next month, I don't know. We have to, we're going to adjourn it until we get the appropriate information from the building department.
I will talk to the engineer this week and have him make sure he gets all these calculations this week.
Also too, I think a plan needs to be in place to remove the construction materials that, that are there as part of the fill. I know this board's never approved a special permit for fill that included construction materials being dumped on site as part of the fill.
It's, it's just concrete and rubble.
And rebar, well, I saw rebar and bricks as well.
Including some electrical piping or conduits, I saw.
Looks like construction debris.
Construction debris, it is construction debris.
That's why you should be getting the tickets for where this fill is coming from, so that you have it, so DEC gets called, you can show them where the fill came from.
Okay.
We need a lot more information.
Yeah, I know where it's coming from, so I can get.
Okay. I have a gentleman who wishes to speak again, so I'm going to ask you to step aside.
The entire property that he has had filled is construction debris. The entire basement under the concrete floor is construction debris. It is, it's got to be a hundred foot by fifty foot by ten foot deep. It's all construction debris. And like I said, we would like to know where it came from, should have been certified because we have, like I said, we're trying to grow food there. We have no idea where this water, you know, where the debris came from and what's coming off of it.
Understood.
So I agree with.
Thank you for coming out this.
The town attorney, it all should be removed.
Thank you for coming out, thank you for getting us this information. As you can tell, we wanted to make sure that any impact to you is corrected as well, so. All right. Anybody else wishing to speak on this matter? So do I have a motion to adjourn until such time as the building department gets the appropriate information?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we'll see you after the building department tells us they have enough information. I would presume, for the neighbors, I would presume that that would be next month because hopefully we got the point across to him, so.
That was my next one, will he be notified to come back?
You're not going to get another notice because it should be next month.
Okay, so we'll just come back.
What you can do is check with Jackie a couple days before the meeting and just see if it's on the agenda or not.
Suppose nothing's going to happen between that and another meeting.
If they submit information, you're welcome to come and look in the building department file and see if there's anything there. But we can't tell you when.
We tried that, and we're told we need a foil request.
That's right. They're not the owner, they have to do a foil.
Okay, but if Jackie gets it into the planning, into the zoning board file, you don't need a foil request to be able to look as a neighbor to look at the, at the zoning board file.
Thank you very much, you have a great day.
Thank you for finally listening to us.
Good evening, folks. All right, our last public hearing of the evening. Item number four, Appeal four zero five four Salvatore Spizial, two eight oh eight Route fifty-two, Hopewell Junction, requesting a three-foot side yard variance for an existing shed that's nineteen foot by twenty foot or three hundred and eighty square feet pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance, and a four-foot variance for a proposed shared driveway that would be twelve foot wide when it should be sixteen feet pursuant to the schedule, sorry, to section one ninety-four dash sixty-seven point one of the zoning ordinance. So I have a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Julie's going to have fun with trying to figure out who made what motions. All right, good evening. So we had an opportunity to meet with you last month to understand your application. You have one of those kind of distinguishing driveways. It's a very long driveway, it's lined with all trees that, you know, I understand you're looking to subdivide your property. If I remember correctly, it's like eighteen acres?
It's about eighteen point something.
Something, yeah, so eighteen, eighteen plus acres. You are only looking to create another.
Yes.
Property, because right now you rent out the house, and you've got the, there's a barn in the back, and so you, you're already going all the way to the back. So in essence, it is a shared driveway by user now. But you're actually looking to formally subdivide the property so you can, and you're put for the planning board to do that, to put a residence in.
Right.
And so you're asking, rather than uproot or disturb the trees, because if you widen the driveway, you're likely to.
Yeah, I don't want to disturb the look or kill the trees.
Right, you're likely to damage the roots of the trees. So that's why you're asking. But we're, what, the stretch of it, if I remember correctly, it's like a hundred and fifty feet, something like that?
I don't know if it's a hundred and fifty feet, but it's not that much from where you turn off at fifty-two.
Right.
To the, to the house where there's a larger area. Maybe a hundred feet, maybe.
Okay. Um, oh, and it's also got the cobblestone along the edge too, so that, that's part of the, the look of it. So it's a very nice country kind of look.
Yes.
Um.
Like South Fork, South Fork Ranch in Dallas.
My, the only thing I'm going to question you about is there are other shared driveways, and you've got to have a good agreement in place so that whoever ultimately, because right now, you, you own.
I, I'm going to.
You're going to own both lots, but you're not going to own both lots forever.
Well, it's going to go to my kids.
So you're going to want to make sure you've got a good maintenance agreement in place because apparently we've had some disputes in town related to shared driveways.
Yep, I understand.
So it's in, going to be in your best interest to get, make sure you get that ironed out sooner than later.
Yep.
All right, comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
I'm good, I'm okay.
So is there anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Salvatore Spizial, two eight oh eight Route fifty-two, Hopewell Junction, requesting a three-foot side yard variance for an existing shed and a four-foot variance for a proposed shared driveway? So seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we can close, we don't have a.
Well, with this one, this is just a procedural hurdle that Mr. Spizial has to cross. This is under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, so with the subdivision before both the planning board and the zoning board. So before you get an approval, any sort of approval here, you have to get this environmentally cleared by the planning board, so your next step will be to go back to the planning board.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. I, this is, so, so we are, we're going to let the planning board lead, be lead agency, we're going to do a coordinated review. So have we actually gotten notice of this yet? So the zoning board has gotten notice from the planning board.
And the planning board is the leading?
They wish to be lead agency, so.
Okay.
So I'm going to actually ask, can we have a motion to, to acknowledge that we want this planning board to be lead agency for Seeker purposes?
So moved.
So what was, so what was the reason for me to go for a variance?
Hold on, I got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Good. We've now cleared a hurdle for the planning board, so now you can go back to the planning board because in essence, we've said we've got no objections to it.
Okay.
But we can't make, pass a formal motion about that because the Seeker's not done. So we can't take any official action beyond designating right now the planning board to be lead agency. It's a coordinated, you're before two boards, it really should be one board that's taking the bigger look at this, and that would be the planning board because ultimately they'll approve the subdivision. But they can't approve the subdivision with your, the variances that you need.
Because with your, with your application, a lot of subdivisions don't require variances, but yours does, so that's why you're before both boards.
So my variance weren't approved?
So no.
It hasn't been approved yet, no.
Yeah, it's not, it's not approved yet.
Anyway, you have to go, you're done with the zoning board, now you have to go to the planning board?
Not done yet, because we have to actually approve the variances.
I thought we.
No, all we've done is closed the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
So we actually have sixty-two days to now act, but we had, that's why we had to act on lead agency requests by the planning board, so that they can do their, the environmental review, they can do Seeker.
Okay.
And then.
Then it's coming back to us?
It'll come back to us, probably, hopefully at the next meeting?
I think so, right?
The planning board has to declare lead agency after they've noticed all the other agencies, whoever they are.
And also, they would have to environmentally clear it, they'd have to, you know, adopt a negative declaration.
Right.
So I'm on the meeting for the next planning board.
You'll be on the next planning board agenda, yes.
Don't you just love government?
I'm sorry?
Don't you just love government?
Yeah, absolutely.
Right answer.
Your tax dollars at work.
All right, so at some point you'll get notice to come back, but actually, you don't even need to come back before us. don't even need to come back before us. We will take action, formal action, after the planning board does their, a piece of theirs, so that we'll, actually, because there was no objection to the variances, okay? So we just can't officially approve them because we can't take action without seeker.
Okay.
All right?
With the, by the board voting to close the public hearing, as you saw from the prior application, there were a lot of public comments. There will be no more public comments, at least before this board.
Oh, I'm not worried about that part. Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Sorry for the confusion, but this is, but it's, it's more important that we do it right than that we do it fast, okay?
We're almost home.
And, and seeker's a state, and seeker's a state law as well, too.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not a town law, why, you have to get this negative declaration, that comes from the states and every municipality.
Wonderful state law.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
All right, folks, so that was the last...
Public hearing.
Public hearing, sorry. I'm just making a note about lead agency in my notes here. So any other applications we're looking at this evening or reviews, and most of these, actually, all of these are the first time we're seeing them, so if we understand them correctly, then we'll put them out for, for public comment at that time. So item number five, Appeal 4055 Santo Barba...
I was waiting for the Giamani.
And I'm Italian, too.
Barba Giamani.
Oxford Giamani.
Yeah, Barbara Giamani.
It's spelled phonetically, believe it or not, yeah.
Yeah.
Hello.
I have a 10-letter maiden name, too, so, you know, I'm, I'm used to this stuff. Seven Leonard Place, Hopple Junction, is requesting a 14-foot sideline variance for an existing pool equipment pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. Wait till you see some of the other names on this agenda, all right? Just warning, there's another one, there's another one coming up. Okay, so first time we're seeing this application, if you don't mind, when was the pool put in?
The pool was put in, it was finished and completed this past June.
Oh, okay.
So June 2022.
What company put it in? Because there's been, there's at least one pool company that should absolutely know better than to put the pool...
It's probably that company. Hold on. I'll tell you in a minute, I'm sorry.
I would hope not. You would know this name of this, the company that we're talking, it's...
It's a ridiculous name.
If you have to look it up, it's probably not.
Probably someone from out of town.
The owner's Jim Hughes.
Okay, not, not who we were, okay. So anyway, they, they put the pool in, they put the pool equipment...
So the, the property was marked and flagged by the surveyor.
Right.
So they, they saw the flags, but they decided to put the pool equipment adjacent to the pool. Like, I'm not sure why they did what they did, but I went to work and got home and the pool equipment was right there. So I said to the owner of the company, I said, "Jim, that's gonna be a problem." He's like, "No, no, no, it's not gonna be a problem, don't worry about it, we'll take care of it." And here I am in front of you guys.
Okay. It said, the, the building department went out and did, said there's little to no screening between this lot and the neighbor. So are you gonna propose any screening? Is there the ability to put something in? The issue with pool equipment is that it can, when, especially if you have it running in the evening or at night and the morning, it can make noise.
Right.
So if there's any kind of screening that you can put in to absorb that noise so it doesn't negatively impact your neighbor, that's what we would be most concerned about.
Right, so we're gonna probably, most likely, put shrubs behind that pool equipment.
Okay.
And then I've had a discussion with my neighbor, and we've been talking about sharing the cost of putting a fence there as well, because he has some items on his property that are kinda eyesore. I don't care, because I'm from Nourishel, and I grew up around construction equipment, but, you know, yeah, we're gonna make sure that he can't see it and we can't see it because I don't wanna see the pool.
So you, you've already had conversations with your neighbor?
Yeah.
He's aware of the, that you're here for this?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Sounds about right.
Comments or questions from board members?
My hometown, Nourishel.
Okay.
That's my only comment.
We're in Nourishel. What part?
All right, wait.
Okay, I am, yeah, I am okay with this application.
Al, anything?
No, good.
Okay. Motion for public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so you're, speak to Jackie because you have to put a sign up on your lawn and just so your neighbors who don't already know will know that you're here.
Sounds good.
All right, and we'll see you that time.
And just get a letter from the neighbor also, if you can.
Okay.
Yeah, just to make sure.
Yeah, either this way he doesn't have to come.
Yeah, definitely. Okay.
All right, item number six.
Thank you.
Appeal 4056 Kimberly Corners Corp., Thomas Cunningham, 1610 Route 82, La Grangeville, requesting a special permit to allow a caretaker apartment in the shopping plaza pursuant to section 194-44 of the zoning ordinance.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you? Oh, my gosh, it's been years since we've seen you.
Well, in fact, I'm here on the repeat of something we did four, five years ago.
Oh, I think it might be longer than that.
Okay.
All right, so for the board's sake, when, I think when Aziz and I might have been both together on the planning board, you, Kimberly Corners was developed and put in there, and you had asked for a caretaker cottage then. You came, you noticed the planning board about it, but you out, came to the zoning board, put it, but I don't think you ever actually put it in.
Well, what happened, well, no, we were through here and we were with the building department.
You got permission to do it.
Right, we had plans that were submitted and approved, and then we ran out of gas. That's what really happened.
Okay.
Well, more, more likely money, but...
But now the plaza's, it's, it's functional, it's operating, it's occupied, so there's a need for you to have a caretaker unit there.
Well, it's a pretty busy place.
Right.
Commuters show up at 6:00 in the morning, and at 7:00, the post office trucks start coming in, at 7:30, the daycare center, and it goes like that all day, well into 3:00, 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, depending on how late Sonny stays open.
So again, this was previously approved by the zoning board, but he just never actually built it, so the per, the approval expired, so he's just looking for a reapproval of, of previously approved. We can't say it's a renewal because it was, it's been long expired.
Now, what, part of your package are just plans from the prior submission, they don't count for this, because we don't know whether we're approved, so we're not gonna pay for an architect.
Right.
But they basically show the perimeter of the apartment, and then a site plan showing the hatched area where the apartment would be, and it's in the back of the building.
All right.
But, yeah, we have, and it's well in septic, so there's a lot of things that can go wrong, and they do with some regularity. It's much better for everybody, including the fire department, if somebody is there that knows how things work.
Okay, so speaking of the fire department, there's a open violation because there's a second floor fire, fire escape? Now, can you explain that?
This was in 2018, the La Grangeville Fire Department responded to an alarm there, and they determined that the fire escape route to the apartment was not safe.
I think you folks did that, too, later. We took that down. You know, there's one of those, one of those drop-downs.
Full-down, yeah.
Yes.
I wasn't there, I didn't see.
You know, well, your department said the same thing. We took it down, and we were redoing that area, there's a permit open still on it. It may get changed by this, I don't know. We were just awaiting final inspection, and then there was one of the other tenants that had an open issue, and I think the department was saying, "We'll do them both at once." I think they did the, you guys did the inspection on the tenant last week or this week, Beekman Nails?
Is that a hair salon?
Yeah, Beekman Nails.
Beekman Nails.
And the Hair Salon is another one. You know, they have their sign they're waiting for you on.
Right, because we're waiting on their CO, their file. She hasn't called for a final inspection yet.
Okay.
That's why she hasn't gotten the sign from that yet.
But the other one, the other one, Beekman Nails, I think, did call. I saw, I saw the list of violations and they had corrected.
I'll check, because I'm not sure if anyone now knows that we needed to look at that fire escape, because it was only your application now that made us realize there's an issue with that fire escape.
Well, yeah, that's when we redesigned it, we took everything away so you couldn't use it as an, it, the whole thing got filled in, so you can't use it as an exit. Now, with this coming back, we may have to rethink that.
Okay.
But the bladder is, is gone, it's been gone for about a year, I think.
So we'll, we'll get to the bottom of that normo?
Okay.
You know, you have to have a public hearing on this.
Yeah, I mean, are you comfortable with us scheduling a public hearing?
Yes, you can schedule it, we'll get our heads around.
Worst comes to worst, we just don't...
What needs to be looked at, right.
Issue and approval. Okay, so, and by the way, according to the file, you had, the appeal for the caretaker apartment was 2014, so nine years ago.
Oh.
Yeah, so, all right, so do I have a...
Motion to advertise.
Thank you. Perfect. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so you'll deal with the building department to make sure these, this open violation for that fire escape or whatever it is is cleared up, okay?
Then we're scheduled for the public hearing?
And then your public hearing will be next month.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
So I'll be in touch.
You do have to put a sign up on the property. How many signs is he actually gonna need?
Jackie? He's gonna need...
I have big frontages.
Yeah, but you know what?
The frontages, well, again, it goes into the other jurisdiction, too, so we only need probably two.
Yeah.
I would say two.
Okay, all right. Item number seven, Appeal 4057, and I apologize ahead of time before I even try this name. Nancy Zvonkovic?
Zankovic.
Zankovic? Okay.
Oh, the V is silent.
What?
The V is silent.
Yes, I think it's Slavic of some sort.
Okay, 70 Miller Hill Road, Hopple Junction, requesting a 17-foot sideline variance for a proposed 1,448 square foot addition pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. So again, first time we're seeing your application, and if you don't mind just taking us through what you are requesting. And by the way, introduce yourself, please.
Stephen Silverstein, I'm the architect of Mr. and Mrs. Zankovic. This is the old Miller House on Miller Hill Road. Everything about the site is non-conforming. I mean, so, and they wanna basically put a new living room and master bedroom suite on the side on Rushmore Road. Miller Hill Road now is very, very heavily trafficked, noise, and items like that, so they, they wanna move their, move their bedroom away from, away from the main road. They also own the property across the street where they have a garage. It's really undeveloped, the property across the street.
So their garage is across the street?
They own their property, too.
Oh, okay.
It, it's basically almost all wetlands, and there's all, there's an old garage on the site. And this is Mr. Miller's old house, so the house is, could be 150, 200 years old. The house presently is 31 feet roughly off Miller Hill Road, and there's a barn on the side, an existing barn on, on Rushmore Road, which is 12 foot, 4 inches off the road, too. So we're basically, if you look at the proposed plan, building an addition onto the main house that mimics the architecture of what's there right now, more, more of the barn than the existing house. And in the addition, there's gonna be a large living room and a master bedroom suite and a laundry room. We're removing one of the bedrooms that was in the old house and replacing it with the new master bedroom suite, so there's no change in bedroom count. But everything, all the setbacks are non...
You have a propane tank that's even closer than the house to the road.
It's, it's the same as the barn. So in other words, we propose to put the house...
No, no, I'm talking about the propane tank that's awfully close to the road.
That's, that's existing. I, I'm not doing anything with that.
What's the elevation difference between the road and the propane tank?
The propane tank? I, I honestly don't know.
And if you ask you, you'd want is some kind of car accident where somebody goes and hits the propane tank.
There's, there's a very, very strong fence in front of that tank. We can, we have to move the propane tank back, that is doable, and I'm not really doing any work on that side of the, of the site at all. The site, the work that I'm doing is really on Rushmore Road.
Nice.
No, no, I, I get that, I'm just looking, we have to look at the entire site to make sure if there's anything that's concerning.
I hear what you're saying.
Okay?
And I will bring that to Mr. and Mrs. Zankovic's attention.
I mean, that tank literally could be like six or seven feet off the road.
Um, that...
So unless you tell me there's a grade change there, I...
There is, there is a grade change, yes. Yes, I, the exact grade I don't know because I was really focused, I, I might have that on the survey, which I have a full survey of the site. I, I didn't put that on because I wasn't really concerned, I wasn't doing any work there. But it, it is higher, and there is a very, very substantial fence in front of it.
I mean, it's a stockade fence, so...
Yeah, but this fence goes behind it. See, since existing fence goes behind it.
The propane tank and the fence, stockade fence. See, the propane tank is here.
There's a fence that goes continuously around the whole site.
Right, yeah, so the propane tank and a generator, and the stockade fence is right by the road.
Yes, but there is, there is, there is a fence that's not shown here that, that is in front of it.
I'm talking about this one.
So there's, there's two tanks.
I'm talking about this propane tank.
I don't even have that propane tank on my plan.
Yeah, it's right on Rushmore.
But that's the one I'm talking about, this like...
There's two of them.
Two of them, yeah, they're right.
There's a septic tank.
Only one is shown on the plan.
Yeah, there's, no, it's, there's two shown on Aziz's plan.
On the what?
Sure is.
Two propane...
Aziz's plan has two propane tanks, one on, oh, it's, it's on the, it's on the later drawing.
Later drawing, yeah.
Okay.
So there's one on the opposite side of the barn, and then there's one all the way on the other side of the road.
Right.
Both of them very, very close to the road. So the one all the way on the side of the barn is protected by a fence, the other one is not.
I think there is a fence there, that's not wrong.
There's a fence behind it, it says.
Yeah, I know, but I think this is not correct. There is, there is a fence around the whole house, I believe, I'm not exactly sure.
Okay.
I, I wasn't expecting this one, so, but I can, I can clarify that one. I, I can get you all the information you want about that, no problem.
One of the things is that, you know, again, the propane tanks both seem to be, you know, within several feet of Miller Hill Road and Rushmore Road.
Yes.
So...
Both of them, right.
Both of them, so, you know...
And then there's a generator showing up on one of these that's awfully close.
I, I think, I, that was done before I was here.
Correct.
So I, I can get all the information on that.
It's like mirror image. There's two generators, too, that are awfully close. Do you have, do you have to make sure they have appropriate approvals for the generators?
Yes, I'm sure, Mr....
There are permits that were issued for the generators.
Okay.
Everything's been permitted.
But again, we don't know how, the distance from the road.
I can get that, I can get that, no problem.
So, you know, because if it, I don't know the scale up here.
So you, do you have a well in the middle of the property where you're proposing this structure?
Yes, we will have to, we have to put a new well in. And, you know, and we will file all the necessary permits for that, and I will have an engineer on the job. What we're really looking for right now is because everything is not exist, is not conforming.
Right, yeah, I was just gonna get to, what is the size of your lot?
I'm looking for direction on that. This, 1.4 acres.
1.456 acres, and this is a, what's yours on, R...
The coverage is, coverage will be, will be within the allowable coverage.
But you have, this is three acre zoning over here?
Yes.
And you have less than half of what's required?
Yes, I understand that.
All right, I need to get that on the record here for making...
No, no, we have, as I said, everything...
So we've got a non-conforming use. He keeps talking about a non-conforming, he's got a non-conforming property.
Right.
Because he's got half of what's really should be for this zone, and he's asking to expand the non-conforming use.
Right, but this is, it's, it's, and it, this is Mr. Miller's house, it's been here wherever, that's what I'm.
No, again, the thing is.
What's the square footage of the existing house?
The existing square footage is, I had it here, it's about 1,500 square feet, I, if I get my phone, I can tell you, I didn't write that down. It's about, the existing house, oh, 1,478 square feet, the existing house, that, the existing barn is 1,627, and the addition is 1,478.
So the addition is 1,478, what's the addition, what's the original house?
1,478 also.
1,478 or 1,448?
It could be, I, let me check my phone, I have it.
Exist, hold on, building areas, existing house, 3,105 square feet, proposed addition, 1,448.
1,448, yeah.
Yeah, that's the house of the barn, you have it.
Oh, okay, alright, okay. So what was the barn?
1,627.
So the existing house is 1,475. And you said it's three bedrooms?
Yes, there's two on the ground floor and one upstairs.
I mean, it's not a horribly small house, but it's not. I can understand why they might want to be increasing it. So the issue is a non-conforming lot that we're asking for to expand, but this area has had other requests to do that, to others? So this is, we're not setting a precedent by considering this?
Two of them are in this parcel.
Oh, two of them are in this parcel.
The barn and the existing house.
And according.
What's for the existing house?
They, when they, the barn, they, they, they.
Oh, okay, alright.
And, and why I think this also may not have much precedential value for other matters is, I believe, parcel access thinks that the house was built before the Declaration of Independence, so it's, at least the original, I don't know exactly what happened since, but it was a long time ago.
Okay, so given the historical considerations here, what's the position of the board?
I mean, we're expanding the non-conforming use of the property, and it's, I mean, again, it's going to be a, looking at it, I mean, the whole.
Corners, that's going to.
The whole corner is going to be like complete.
Yeah, how's it a little corner?
The very latest page shows us kind of what it's going to look like. What color is this? What color is it?
It's a light gray.
Okay, just curious.
The whole addition is, it's a one-story addition.
You said one-story addition?
Yeah.
Yes, no, public hearing?
Um, we can go to public hearing, motion to advertise.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, let's see if anybody has any concerns about it.
Is there, are there any other concerns? I, I've not.
As far as moving the health department and things like that, for the, the change of the, the bedrooms around, should I speak to someone? I've got work on this.
Yes, so the building department will have to clarify, and it could also provide some measurements of the differences to the propane tanks.
And, and you have to go to the Dutchess County Health Department for your septic approval.
Can I make an appointment to speak to the building department?
Uh, sure.
Okay.
Just, you have a car?
Not with me right now.
You'll just call.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we would need to, you know, how close all the different structures are to the road.
Yes, I, I have all the buildings, I didn't have the propane tanks, I'm sorry, but I will, I will take care of that.
Alright, and our last item on our agenda.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Appeal 4058 Scott Bryan, 45 Route 52, Stormville, requesting a 10-foot sideline variance, 530 square foot size variance for a proposed 40 by 32 or 1,280 square foot detached garage pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations of the zoning ordinance. The footprint of the existing house is 833 square feet. Good evening.
Good evening.
So to start.
Do we have to do a disclosure?
That's what I was just going to say, to start, I think many of you know Scott is the town engineer, Scott does not oversee this board, Scott has nothing to do ultimately with this board, very, very little, he's got more to do with the planning board than this board, so our review is, can, can be totally objective, we, you know, we can be as hard as we want on him, because obviously.
And he loves, he loves being.
We have to be, he's careful of any precedent that he might be setting here, but yeah, in full disclosure, he is the town engineer, but there is no, you know, there's no conflict, there's no conflict of interest.
No, no, section 809 of the general municipal law, if anyone thinks we don't do our research on this.
And he's going to comply.
Disclosure's the key, and we disclose, and we meet the requirements of the statute.
So just so, eschbark is clear.
And he's going to comply with all the rules and regulations, so I don't have an issue.
Well, he can't say he doesn't know them, let's just put it that way.
Correct.
Alright, so Scott, take us through what you're looking to do. This is a very small house, obviously, 833 square feet, it's a rental, and you're looking to put it.
Well, it was my mom's house until she passed December 5th.
Okay.
So it just, just became a rental.
Got it.
Because I want to keep the house. I'm not sure whether when I downsize, whether I'm moving to it or not, I'm, I'm not certain about that, but for now, I definitely want to keep the house.
Okay.
And.
But in the meantime, you want to be able to add, is there?
I've always wanted to put a building in the back, always wanted to do that, just never had the building in time.
What is the size of the property?
It's 1.4, I think, acres?
1.382.
I'm sorry?
1.382.
Three eighths, about 1.4 acres, yeah. And it's a very irregular shaped piece, which I did not create, it's very irregular, it, it tapers down, and then it opens up again in the back.
Like a tomahawk.
Something to that effect.
So you actually have two front yards?
Well, I think it's been established, I'll defer to.
We recently changed the code to, to get rid of that issue.
So his front yard is Old Route 52.
Okay. Got it, go ahead.
So anyway, 32 by 40, the reason I'm looking for that size, I have a car collection, I have a few trucks, I have actually too many, and I have them scattered all over, and I want to put them all kind of in, in one spot. Also, our plans are to get an RV in the next few years as I approach retirement, and I don't want to do this twice, I want to make it big enough to, to handle that, so that's, that's the size.
Well, actually, New York State Secret requires for segmentation purposes, if you're planning it in the next five years, essentially, we should.
Well, almost by code, I could put a smaller one and a big one, and not even come here, but I want, it makes sense to put one building.
How are you going to access this? Because again, you, there's frontage on Route 52 and Old Route 52.
My preference is to access it from 52, okay? If this moves forward, I will apply to DOT to get a driveway straight off 52.
So saying that, how can this not be a front yard?
We'd have to look at the code section again, because we did update it so that he would only, so that everyone really only has one front yard.
That causes a problem, I'll just access it from Old 52.
No, no, I, I'm not saying it causes a problem, I'm just saying if it potentially identifies as an issue, then let's clean it up, and let's just deal with the fact that he's going to have a garage in his front yard. That's all, that's all I'm saying.
In between now and the next meeting.
A detached garage in the, in the front yard.
We'll look at the definition of.
Okay, that's all.
It's just recently changed, so, um, we'll, we'll take a look at that.
I, I think the corner lot was very clear, I have a very unique lot, not many lots at all have frontage on, on two roads.
Oh, they're, they're more than you think.
And my house is obviously, obviously it's facing Old 52, I mean, the, the, the front yard is clearly Old 52.
Generally speaking, to put it simply, it was supposed to be whatever yard your front door faces, that's your front yard.
Right.
So what, I got confused, what are we saying is the front yard? Old, because.
Old Route 52.
Old Route 52, okay, that's what I wrote down, okay.
Alright, so tell me about the neighbors, how close are the, what's the screening in between them?
I've talked to the neighbors.
Obviously, this is.
Yeah, I've talked to the neighbors, there's like a little existing tree line, I won't say it's, I mean, some of the trees are actually very mature, it doesn't create a very significant visual buffer, you know, you can see through it, I, I can see through to their house, and when I discussed this with them, their concern was I kind of block the sun or the mountain view, so I shifted the building back to the north, okay? And I explained to him if I shifted back to the north, so that when you're like looking out the side of your house, you don't even see it, you know, like to the back of their driveway where their shed is, that I'd have to get a little closer to the property, because they do have a well in front.
Right.
So I staked it, you know, they're fine with it, they have no issue. I could plant trees, they haven't expressed an interest in me planting any trees, but if they do, I will.
What are you going to have it look like?
Well, my first impression was to paint it like a burnt barn red, like, like the shed, because I, my mother liked that color, but I'm okay with the green, which the house is like a forest green as well, I'm very flexible with, with that. It's just going to be a single-story, 14-foot, single-story, on the end of 12-foot door fit the RV, and then the other doors will probably be 10 by 10 foot of cars and trucks ahead.
Okay, so it's going to be tall enough to accommodate the RV?
RV, yeah.
I mean, I guess the question is.
Again, the issue is, again, do you plan to bring it from Route 52, because then the issue of front yard, because all right now.
Well, let's put it this way, I, I think it just, not that I have to, but it just makes more sense, because without having to like navigate around the house and around the shed and through the lawn, it's just, it's just cleaner, and then if I, for however long I'm renting the house, I'm not disturbing the tenant in the house, you know, not that I'm going there all that frequently, but when I do, you know.
Currently, as it stands, the front, the proposed garage is in the backyard, but if you bring an access to it, then, but again.
And again, I don't have that approval, I want to get this stuff done first, and then I'm going to apply and see if I can get.
My, my question is, if it's going to have its own access, do we want it to look more like a house, instead of looking like a large barn, a large, large garage, and just because of the size of it, it's, it's a small house, honestly, so do we have it just happen to put some features on it that make it look more like a house?
Or, or do I just put more, well, it's kind of hard to put screening, because I want to get the RV, and I can't put trees.
Because it's far enough away from the house on the other end of the property that.
150 feet.
And if it has its own access from the other, from the other street, just have it look like a house, and then it doesn't look out of place. A large garage looks out of place.
When you say a house, I just want to be, I mean, I'm just planning on putting in a metal building, you know, it's not, no, it's going to be stick-built, it's going to be a metal, maintenance-free building.
You can't, you don't have the ability to put a window or two in to.
I can add windows.
Break up a, break up a solid wall.
I can put windows in, yeah.
So using one of the steel barns?
Yeah. Whether it's a pole barn or a steel barn, I haven't decided yet, you know, but same maintenance-free, you know.
Right.
No shingles, no painting, just something maintenance-free.
Got it.
And again, the, your, your property is kind of long and odd-shaped, that.
On the other side of me is just, I think it's Verizon has a substation or something like that, there's like a commercial building on the other side.
Commercial building, okay.
Yeah.
That'd be a long driveway to come from Old Route 52.
Right.
And there's also a difference in elevation, you know, when you drive on 52 itself, you really have to break your neck to look up in there and find this thing 150 feet back with the difference in elevation, you know.
Does the existing house have a garage?
No.
Okay, so that in and of itself says the house should have a garage, so the property should have, hold on, the property should have a garage. When we've had such large garages, we have asked people for a floor plan, so if you could, if you can justify.
It's just an open space, I can give you that, yeah.
Right, if you can just justify why you're asking for this size, it can be in the file, we've asked for other applicants to give us that, just to justify why.
Yeah.
I would ask if you could to give us some kind of elevation, to show us what it's going to look like.